I'd like to call to order the Town of McCandless February tenth, two thousand twenty meeting. We have the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Angela Woods.
We give sincere thanks for this opportunity to meet together and for the opportunity to serve our neighbors. May we listen to one another intently with the purpose of working together and bettering our community. May we humbly accept the responsibilities assigned to us. May we carry out each of these responsibilities to the best of our capabilities. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One of the favorite things for me to do, and I think for the members of council, is to recognize outstanding citizens. So tonight, we have, we're going to recognize one of these special people. In the course of a regular workday, this gentleman came upon a person having a medical emergency. Establishing him postless, he administered CPR. Could I please have Brian Johnson, who is the Director of Safety and Security of CCAC, to please step to the microphone, as well as Michael Brendel.
It is with great honor that I present you with the certificate for your selfless heroic act. And this certificate reads, Michael Brendel, in recognition of your heroic efforts administering CPR to attempt to revive a person experiencing a medical emergency on October the eleventh at the Community College of Allegheny County North Campus.
Okay. Hold back here. Do you want to remind? Okay, yeah. Come on up. Okay. Just turn that around. Stand by your desk, Debbie. We're proud of him. He's a hero. One more announcement. The only thing almost as much fun as giving out awards is receiving awards. So I'm pleased to announce that the Town of McCandless has been chosen again as a banner community. Municipalities earn this designation by distinguishing themselves as model communities through a commitment to professional development, intergovernmental cooperation, sound physical management, and practicing communications to engage community stakeholders. The town will receive this award March sixth at the Alum Luncheon. All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as submitted to every, to each member of council from the reconvened meeting of January the twenty-second, two thousand twenty, and the council's meeting that same night, January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Are there any changes or amendments to the minutes? Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the minutes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are adopted. Reports of committees, Finance and Personnel Committee.
Presentation by McCandless Square Developer Kevin Dockerty of Adventure Champion Development pertaining to request for tax abatement to support new construction and economic development in a deteriorated area within town in accordance with local economic revitalization tax assistance, LERTA legislation.
Would you like us, this microphone, or is it that?
That one's probably good.
We've got a couple of displays that would be helpful.
My name's Kevin Dockerty. I am pleased to be here and thank you for the opportunity to have a conversation about an idea that I hope that you'll think is worth considering. Tonight, we wanted to talk about the property located along Blasier Drive. Blasier Drive has, as you well know, has been in a deteriorated, deteriorated position for quite some time. And we got involved about two years ago. And with me tonight, I have Barry Ford from Continental Development and Kevin McKeegan from Meyer, Unkavik and Scott, in case any questions come up that I can't answer. What we've done on this board, I'm not sure everybody can see it, but we've got eight pieces of property along the Blasier Drive area marked out in red. We've got their lot and block numbers, current value, valuation by the county, and current taxes that are being paid on those properties currently. So I'm not sure how familiar everybody is with LERTA, but LERTA stands for Local Economic Revitalization Tax Act. It was a piece of legislation constantly put in place forty-plus years ago. And in this case tonight, what we wanted to do was talk about having the school district and the Town of McCandless in Allegheny County work together with us and the other property owners. We have control of three of the eight pieces of property, but the other five properties that sort of surround us are also in pretty dire condition, or have been underdeveloped at this point. So we wanted to throw out the idea of working together to come up with a cohesive plan. Today, Barry's group, Continental Development, has come through the process and gotten their final plan approval for senior living, assisted living, and independent living facility. The rest of the plan has not been submitted. It's been through the concept plan status, but it hasn't been through an actual plan for specifics, particularly, our company's going to develop the retail portion. And then we have a third piece that we call the flex piece that we're not sure what's going to end up there just yet. So, and then adjoining us to the west would be the former Showcase Cinema Site. And felt like that, to the west, goes all the way to Reideman, the edge of Reideman Road here. And to the east, all the way over beyond the funeral home, all the way down to Babcock and the corner. And we included, although it doesn't necessarily, I mean, the area in red was kind of our best guess of what everybody would want to see. So it's, you know, we're anxious to see and hear what you think would make sense. The LERTA legislation has been a helpful tool to developers, particularly when you, you know, over the last two years, we've spent a lot of time and money studying the property to find out, you know, I don't know if anybody lived here, when I was twelve, I played golf on Twin Oaks Golf Course, and there were three Pennzoil tanks there. And I think it was about, by the time I was fifteen, they had the construction of the cinema. But we found remnants from all of that previous activity that we need to clean up. There's, if you look across this hill here, along the right-of-way of McKnight Road, it looks bad. It's just never been cleaned up. Nobody's paid it any attention. When we had the charette back in, how many months ago, Barry?
Year and a half.
Year and a half. People were asking for things like ballfields, walking trails, community gardens. All those things come at a cost. So what we're asking is that you consider all of us working together to create something special. So we got a few folks from the school district, I believe. It was premature to even mention this at the county level yet, because it's just a discussion, but I had met with Kim, talked about it, said, let's bring it to the public and talk about it. So that's why we're here.
Good evening, and Barry Ford with Continental. Really, our projects moving forward, the question's been asked, the senior housing, with or without this. My biggest concern here the last two years is I've watched what's going on around us on this property, is nothing's going on around us, right? The property to the west has just sat there stagnant. And I don't see any activity there. And we really believe that a, an economic incentive, if you put it in place that allows somebody to develop that property and save a little money on their future taxes, not on the existing taxes, is how LERTA works, it will give somebody or someone incentive to develop around all that we're doing. Everybody knows there's a lot to overcome with that site there. It's in, a lot of it's in the floodplain. There are infrastructure issues, as Kevin said, there were environmental due diligence issues. This money would help somebody overcome that and allow our project to be an anchor and allow things to happen around it. So we think it's a win-win for everybody to consider allowing this on the property. I think we picked the red, Kevin, because it's the commercially-owned properties. I think that's how you came up with those, with that, with those red lines. So we really believe it, that and our project will allow something to happen on the rest of this valuable property. And so that's why I'm here to support, support Kevin this evening.
Because we may have skipped over some important things before jumping right into this. First of all, for the record, my name is Kevin McKeegan. I'm with the law firm of Meyer, Unkavik and Scott. As Barry indicated, LERTA is a tool that the state put in place thirty or forty years ago to encourage development of what are referred to as deteriorated areas. So before you can have a LERTA program in a municipality, the first thing that has to happen is that the governing body of the municipality, the Town Council in this instance, has to make a determination that the area in question is blighted. Now, blight is one of those words that we think we all know what it means, but of course, it's a legal term, so it doesn't necessarily mean what the dictionary says it means. Blight for purposes of LERTA goes back to the definition of the urban redevelopment law of nineteen forty-seven. And among other things, what that definition allows is property to be deemed blighted if it's vacant, overgrown, and unsightly, if it's in a defective design or arrangement of buildings, streets, or lots, or if it evidences economically and socially undesirable land uses. So what has to happen is that you, as the governing body, hold a public hearing to make a determination that the property that's being proposed for a LERTA ordinance is blighted. That public hearing is intended to give you input from not only your planning commission, but also the County Economic Development Authority and others who might be interested in the planning process. If you make a determination it's blighted, then you can go on to craft a LERTA ordinance. Now, what does a LERTA ordinance do? So if you think about taxes, right now, they're starting here. Presumably, when things get built, they're going to be here. So what the LERTA ordinance does is say, the incremental increase, the incremental assessment, some portion of that is going to be abated for a limited period of time. The statute says it can be no longer than ten years. And that is meant to encourage development of the property. What typically happens in most LERTA ordinances is that the statute allows you to abate a hundred percent of that incremental value. Most ordinances say, no, it's going to be some percentage of the increase, fifty percent, sixty percent, forty percent. It's usually capped at a set dollar amount. So regardless of whether the incremental tax value might generate three hundred thousand dollars, you can cap that, you can cap the abatement amount at a hundred thousand dollars. And most ordinances have that abatement decline over time, on the theory that we want to encourage development, but we don't want, we don't want the pigs at the trough, so to speak. So you may start, you may have an ordinance that's for ten years. Every two years, the amount of the abatement drops by twenty percent so that at the end of the ten-year period, the abatement is fully extinguished. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understand that this is not, this is not just walk in the door and get it. It's something where we have to work with the municipality, both in terms of making a determination of blight, and then with the municipality and the school district and others who might be interested in terms of how the abatement of that incremental increase in value that comes when buildings are built, how that, how that gets appropriated. Again, it does not change any underlying assessments now. So if this property has a hundred thousand dollar assessment as vacant land, you always collect a hundred percent of those taxes. It only looks at the incremental increase that may come when a building is built. So I hope that sort of brief overview of the LERTA statute and how it works was helpful.
In your experience, is property like this considered blighted? Is that typical?
Yes, yeah, I mean, this is, I mean, it's, I don't need to tell you the history. It's been vacant for a long time. It's subject to flooding and other things. There are environmental conditions there that need to be ameliorated. So, you know, again, when we think of the word blight, we think of, you know, the slums of post-World War II, urban, urban areas, but, but it's a broader term than that. It can certainly include property of this type.
Any questions or comments from council?
Yes, I would like to ask, have you spoken to the five other property owners? Do they know about this and what their thoughts are?
We've had some conversations, but we have not specifically asked them to join into it. We thought it would be appropriate to have a conversation here first.
And what qualifies that northern piece as a blight? Because that's a cliffside, and it's just stones and some, like, grass.
Well, again, we included the district of what was on the redevelopment. So it may or may not be, we had to pick, pick and choose, but it was an abutting property to Blasier Drive, so it kind of went from one end of Blasier to the other.
And what if they, so what if they don't want that to be developed? Can that be eliminated from the space, then?
If they don't want that to be developed, then it doesn't get developed.
That upper area is not in a floodplain, though, as I understand. It's down where rave, it's down where rave theater is, isn't it?
Yeah, this is the area specifically that's in the, I'm sorry, this is the area specifically that's been in the flood area, the area that obviously had gotten to building at one point.
That's, that's the side rave theater is, what you're pointing to.
Right. This area did not.
Right, right, the upper area. Okay.
Bruce, would you like to weigh in on this?
Well.
There's a whole lot of questions out here about whether or not we want to do this. As I understand it, if we are going to do it, the town has to facilitate it. I'm not sure if that's accurate or not. I think we at least, we at least have to facilitate it. From a town perspective, we've got to be very careful with giving tax abatements. Our taxes in the town are, I think, the second or third lowest in the county. If we're still going to start giving tax abatements, it's going to be very difficult for us. The other part of this is if we are developing commercial, developing this commercially, our services, our fire department and police department are going to have to, those services are going to have to be provided there. So we're going, it's going to cost us money if this is developed in a commercial way. It'll be nice to have those taxes that would be generated from that, since our taxes are so low to begin with. It would be nice to have those taxes come back to us. Now, if you're looking at county taxes and school taxes, that's a different story, and I don't know if they have an appetite for doing this or not, but that'll, that's something for them. But I think that we could facilitate it if DDB, but actually participating, that's something you'd have to give a great deal of thought to. The other thing is, it's, at this point, very vague. We don't know what kind of abatements they would be looking for, or revitalization taxes they'd be looking for. There's, there are a lot of questions to it. So if, I think it needs a lot more discussion before anybody moves ahead with it.
I have a question in regard to the taxes. Do the county and schools need to, do we all need to say yes before it moves forward? Or can one part be separated out from that?
No, they do not. They do not need, it can be individually, but I still think that we have to be the facilitator. We have to form a district, as I understand it.
Tell us about that district.
The district, I think it has to be, I'm not the expert on this, but Gavin and Kevin know a lot more about it than I do, but I believe that we just have to have a meets and bounds district, and someone's going to have to have that survey and come up with the, with the meets and bounds part of that. We have to have public hearings and make sure that everybody that's in it is involved, and it has to be equal and fair. And that's about all that I can tell you about it.
If I may, the, I mean, either Gavin or Kevin could correct me if I'm wrong, there's a number of different parts that would occur here. One is that the town designate a specific area based on those legal descriptions as a LERTA district. The town can also designate that area as blighted under the definition in the redevelopment end. Then, the town can consider any kind of a tax exemption along with the school district and the county. There's, there's nothing to say that all three have to grant the exemption. But the town is the only entity that can create the LERTA district and declare the area blighted.
Yes, that, that's, yeah, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll jump in if I think you're saying something wrong. Thank you. I know you will. Mr. Graham, that's exactly correct. The municipality's first role is to make it, is to make, is to make a finding of blight and to designate the area for which an abatement may be possible. Whether the municipality chooses to then participate in any sort of abatement program is a separate decision. But neither the county nor the school district can consider an abatement program until there's been a designation of blight. So that's kind of like the first level question. Regarding Bruce's comments, again, it's important to keep in mind that whatever taxes you're getting out of the property now doesn't change. And you have the flexibility in the abatement program to say, okay, we're only going to abate fifty percent of the taxes, the incremental value, or we're only going to abate sixty percent or forty percent. So it's not like, it's not like the incremental value disappears, or you can't touch it. That's part of working out what the actual abatement program is, as opposed to just some sort of flat, flat zeroing out of that incremental value. So, like, got anything wrong, Gavin?
I think you're good, and I think we, I don't know if we've said specifically, though, that we're talking about the actual cost of the improvements, right?
Well, it's the, it's the assess, it's the increase in assessment that's attributable to those improvements. That's correct.
So we talk about things like, you know, trails and ballfields, you're really not going to see much of an impact.
Right.
From a tax-saving standpoint.
Exactly.
You're talking about commercial-type buildings is where you're going to get your.
Yeah, it's, it's a tax, it's, it's an abatement that applies to improvements, not to landscaping.
Right.
Okay.
Any comments from the public?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Questions, a couple of questions. The public good, we're talking about taking future tax dollars and giving them back to the developer, I believe, is what they're asking for. What, is there any sense of what, specifically the public good, other than the development of the site, that that brings to the town or the other taxing bodies? Bruce, did you have some sense there? Are we building a road that the town, that people in the town can use with their tax dollars, or are we just giving it to the developer to?
At this point, it's, it's in very early stages of discussion. I don't think any of that's been determined at this point. At least, this is the first I've actually seen, even a district even. So we're, we're, we're not to that point of making that determination yet. And that's the, that is the important question for the taxpayers, for sure.
You made some amazing points. And my concerns, obviously, we're, we are now up to a twenty-year cycle on our repaving program. Our, our capital funding badly needs to be restored. We've got an ambulance authority that's on life support. I'm sorry for the pun, but, and this will only put more weight on it. I have a lot of questions and concerns, you know, in taking into clearing a multimillion-dollar site, blighted. Everybody in the town knows it's, it's not been developed for five years because it's tied up because of a purchase of a sliver of land there, a million-dollar sliver, that blocked the development of the site. So a lot of questions. I think what we'd be looking for is public good, real public good from this. And, and how much control would the town have over, over that, that crafting of that agreement, that LERTA agreement? In other words, if the school district were to grant a LERTA, would they be the only participants in that agreement, or would the town have some voice in that?
If, if all three taxing bodies are participatory, each of us would have a say in how it was, how it was done.
If the town grants, my question is if the town grants this, this blight condition, and the school board, the school district decides to proceed, and I'm a school taxpayer.
Oh, who's going, I understand the question.
Does this town have any voice and any control over, over how that LERTA benefit is crafted and agreed to?
Regardless, our, our planning and zoning practices are in effect no matter what. So from that perspective, absolutely. For the quote "public good," I think all three of us would have to negotiate what that public good would be, as, as we're doing. At least, that's how I would see it happening.
Yeah, it's up to the school district without input from the town as to what sort of benefit they would want to provide. Right? So, I mean, it's up to the town to set, to make the determination initially. It's up to the town to determine whether there's any abatement that the town wants to take part in. And then the school district would have the option, and the county would have the option to provide whatever benefit they deem fit without necessarily input from the town.
I see.
I think it's important, if we are to move forward, that we have a good idea of what the plan might be. We understand what Barry's doing on that piece of property, and we understand, Kevin, what you're anticipating doing on at least one part. There's still one piece that we're not sure of, but you also have a piece that the Port Authority controls, you have another, several pieces that would be unknowns. I think for the town to seriously consider anything, my recommendation would be that we have a good sense of what may occur, so that we know short-term and long-term. Short-term, what we might be giving up, long-term, what we'd be gaining. But I think a more cohesive plan needs to be drawn up, or at least conceptualized.
If I may just address that for a minute, Mr. Kirk's question, which was a good one. I see primarily the benefit, that piece of property to the left of where we're developing, Showcase Cinema Site. That group tried to sell me that property for five or six years. They tried to sell it to everyone. And the reason that nothing has happened there is because of the condition, not some other deal, some other parcel. And, and I think my perspective here, like I said, I'm moving forward with my project with or without this. We're excited to get started, and we're going to be doing that quickly. But, but my comment is that if, if you don't help put something in place, nothing is going to happen there. Nothing is going to happen there. And so I think the public good is, do you want it to look like this, or would you like to help create a project, a plan that allows something nice?
But you also have a piece that the Port Authority controls. You have another, several pieces that would be unknowns. I think for the town to seriously consider anything, my recommendation would be that we have a good sense of what may occur so that we know short term and long term. Short term, what we might be giving up, and long term, what we'd be gaining. But I think a more cohesive plan needs to be drawn up, or at least conceptualized.
If I may just address that for a minute, Mr. Kirk's question, which was a good one. I see primarily the benefit, that piece of property to the left of where we're developing, Showcase Cinema Site. That group tried to sell me that property for five or six years. They tried to sell it to everyone. And the reason that nothing has happened there is because of the condition, not some other deal, some other parcel. And, and I think my perspective here, like I said, I'm moving forward with my project with or without this. We're excited to get started, and we're going to be doing that quickly. But, but my comment is that i- if, if you don't help put something in place, nothing is going to happen there. Nothing is going to happen there. And so I think the public good is, do you want it to look like this? Or would you like to help create a project, a plan that allows something nice to go forward there? So anyway, I'm just throwing out, as I see it from my perspective, that the main good there is that it won't look like this 20 years from now. It's going to look like something else. And you have great zoning ordinance in place to protect you with what can get built. And so that ordinance doesn't get touched by any of this. Obviously, anybody developing, whether it's us or somebody else, has to follow all of those rules. So anyway, I just throw that out to, in response to your question, Mr. Kirk.
May I ask, previously, you gave us a pamphlet, Kevin gave us a pamphlet, as to what the upper end would look like, the development. But you're talking about where Showcase Cinema is. Do you have any idea what, what you would put in there?
We don't own the property.
I realize that, but, but aren't you encompassing that with all of this?
Yep, we're, we are, we're including that as within the district so that that owner has some tools in their tool bag to hopefully incentivize them to do something.
Okay, you're not.
We'd like to see something happen, because we're about to make a large investment. And we've got what we've got on either side of us not looking so good. And I would just remind you that in McCandless Crossing, we did LERTA, 2009. And that was only Allegheny County. But what we, what it allowed us to do as a developer, we spent $11 million on the infrastructure. So in the case of the county, which McCandless had to determine that the area was blighted for us to move forward so that the county could consider it. The county then, over the last 10 years, has provided an increment to us that has reduced our initial capital investment of 11-plus million dollars to about, almost 2.2 million, ended up being their investment, while still getting something that they weren't getting before. In addition, you know, today, there's 20, almost 2,400 jobs that were created there as a result of that action. So there's some, there's ongoing benefits beyond just seeing the property developed.
So you're not looking at purchasing the rave property?
No ma'am.
Okay.
Just, just to clarify for everybody, the LERTA that was established that Kevin just mentioned, absolutely, the, the county finally in 2009 decided to add on to, jump on to the LERTA part of it. And it was entirely separate from what the town and the school district did back in 1991. In 1991, we formed a transportation district, and we picked out five, five areas of traffic improvements that were made as part of that. And that was, the, for the hospital, we did Babcock and Cumberland. We did for LaRoche and everybody's improvement, we did, we did Duncan and Babcock. We did Duncan and McKnight, which was a huge part of the project. And at the time that we did that, we, there was a, if, if you look at it now, there's like a fishhook street, Duncan Avenue, that goes the whole way back to Home Two Suites. That was part of the plan, because I think there were five different property owners. And the town thought that because we didn't want access to McKnight, we did a, we designed that road. Our, our traffic engineer designed that road, so each of those five property owners would have access without tapping into McK, or having an access to McKnight, direct access to McKnight Road. Kevin, when Kevin came along, he honored that part of it. And the, and then Cumberland and McKnight was another project. So we, those were, that's a different type of LERTA. And on top of that, those improvements were also paid for by, by a tax on each trip. So there was a tax that was paid on, on each trip. I think at the time, it was averaged out to probably $52 a trip. And each of the property owners had to pay according to the number of trips they had. So that's, and then, although the concept is the same, it's a whole different process. There was no tax abatement or tax relief given for that, from the town or from the school district. In fact, both of us at the time were adamant that we weren't going to give McCandless Crossing, sorry Kevin. We, you know it, you go ahead.
But your point, your point's well taken. They had already provided the original transportation district that had been in place since 1991. So that was a good starting point. The whole point, though, was, we had conditional use zoning. Everybody had a seat at the table. That's what I'm asking tonight, or we're asking tonight, is let's get a table, let's get around it, and let's see what we can do to come up with a good plan for this. School district, county, County McCandless, us, and maybe the adjacent property. And a plan that clearly identifies the benefits, so that everybody can look at them and make a decision, is it good for us or not for us?
I think, I think that's what we're looking for, the benefits.
I, I think one of the things might be a little bit confusing for, for council, and just sort of the way it's presented, is this is, the order of things is a little unusual for, for a LERTA district in this case, as you can probably tell. Normally, you have a property that just, you can't develop under any circumstances. You're just desperate to try to get someone in there to do it. And, you know, you, you use these incentives to try to get that developer to come and do a development. Now, there could be aspects of these properties that, that would sort of fit that bill. But I think maybe your question is, you may be asking is, well, we, there's already development approved going forward without the, without the incentive. And so that's why it's, you know, it's, it's a little bit backwards. You know, I'm not saying that they, what they don't believe that they have merit here. It's just that that's, the order is just a little bit different than you would normally see this presented.
To that point, Mr. Rob, is there a reason that we couldn't separate the, the property out? So that we already know that Mr. Ford's going to proceed with the development on the one end? Is there a reason that we couldn't just make the LERTA district smaller for the other end?
There is not. If the town council made a determination that, that the, you know, that maybe the cinema property or another property down towards that end was, was in fact blighted and, and development in that area needed to be incentivized, that would be an auction on the table. And, you know, that would, I guess collectively, maybe benefit that whole area as well.
Any questions or comments from, from the public?
Public comment will be at the end.
At the end of all the items?
At the, at the end of the finance person committee, on all the items.
Okay, should we move to item two? Item two, review checklist number two dated January 1, 2020 through January 31, 2020, totaling $1,074,218.42, as submitted to each member of council and posted on Bolton Board and the town website. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
There's no motion.
Okay. Okay, item number three, review the monthly financial summary and dashboard report.
Good evening, council. You have before you a continuation for December of 2019. We have, we continue to report on fiscal 2019 results because we're still in the 60-day governmental accrual period. 19's results are more pertinent than 20's at this time. As you can see, revenues are at 105% of budget compared to 101% in 2018. Our expenditures are about 95% of budget compared to 90% in 2018. These numbers will continue to fluctuate through the audit at the end of next month. So, you know, please be advised that these numbers may change as the audit comes in and as revenue continues to come in, as well as delayed invoices and such. I do believe that we will finish the year under budget with the expenditures. And I do believe we've received a majority of the revenue at this time. Do you have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
In regard to the one-time, or paying tax remittance, was that, what was the, that nominee there?
There was a one-time payout for a commission that was paid on a software development to some members of the town of McCandless. We do expect for there to be some amount of adjustment on that. We learned at a later date that the tax that was calculated, was calculated at the city rate versus the town rate. So while that one-time influx on the commission will not reoccur, we do expect it also to be reduced before the end of the fiscal year is finalized. It was close to, when it came in, it was almost a half a million dollars.
Mr. Greathouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, later, later tonight, we're going to be reviewing and possibly approving the paving program for 2020. And I, as I brought up earlier, we learned in conversations here, committee meetings with Mr. Sabina, that, that our public works paving program cycle, which was 10 years, 10, 10 years ago maybe, has stretched to a 20-year cycle.
Yes, sir.
And, and I'd like to, at this time, because we don't break during committee meetings, I'd like to ask council, I, I believe it's time to undertake some type of planning to restore that capital funding and at least get that, that capital road replacement cycle down to 15 years, which I believe is roughly the estimated lifespan of the, of the asphalt that we're using with the super pave.
Yes, sir. As, as you're aware with this year's budget, the paving program for 2020 is partially funded with the liquid fuels money from the state, as well as the investment from last year's fund balance investment. It will continue to be so, hopefully in the next few years. As you can see in tonight's report, we will finish, hopefully this year, with a surplus in the general fund fund balance investment. And that will be directed to next year's investment into capital projects. And so as, as we continue to budget accordingly and conservatively, those amounts can be funded through general fund surpluses. Because the liquid fuels money, I believe, has been steady, but not overly increased in, in prior years.
And I guess, I guess what I'm suggesting is, it might be beneficial for council if we had a target number. I mean, I could do the back of the envelope and say, we're spending $2 million this year, and if that's the 20-year cycle, if we had another million dollars every year, we could, we could reduce it to 15-year cycle. If that's the target, I think it'll be valuable for all of us as we make really tough decisions on prioritizing our, our funds going forward, as you said, to create potentially that surplus needed.
Yes, sir. It's something we can certainly discuss during the 2021 budget process. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four, move to adopt resolution number four of the 2020 series, a resolution amending resolution number 13 of 2018 by naming current signatories authorized to sign documents relative to the town of McCandless' defined benefit pension plans.
Is there a sec, is there a motion, you made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and second, does council have any questions about this?
Mr. Chairman, or Madam President, question. This resolution, there are five members, three of them are council members. Under this resolution, theoretically, two council members could change the pension plan without staff's knowledge. Is there, is there anything in the resolution that would ensure that staff, management of the town would be notified if such a change were made? Or should that be placed in that, in that resolution?
At this point, Mr. Kirk, there's nothing that would prohibit that from occurring? Any language? The resolution could be amended to that effect.
We can, yeah, it's a, it's a malleable document until we vote on it. And even after that, it could be amended. It's, you know, it doesn't have the advertising requirements like an ordinance, so we can, we can work with the language.
If it's, if it's a pleasure of council to, to put that safeguard in there, just to, at least for coordination, communication purposes. It is a rather large pension fund.
I agree. I think someone from the town should be involved also, so that we don't have just two council members.
It's five people who will be on the signatories. And it will be.
Right.
President, Vice President, Secretary, Bob, and Trish. So there'll be five people on there. Any two of those five could sign. So it's not just council are the only signatories. Did I explain that correctly?
You, you did, and that, and that is my concern, that, that with only two signatories required and no requirement for notification to town management, theoretically, any two of the three elected officials listed on there could make significant changes, investment decisions for our pension plan. And I, I have a concern with that.
I, I would agree with you, Mr. Kirk.
Yeah, I, I do too.
It, it provides a, like a balance and check and balance of power.
Right.
That's precise, thank you.
Do you want, do you want to have the, have the manager be a required signatory? Just to ensure that he's one, you know, to make it three, and then two plus the manager?
That would, that would be my preference, and I would accept it.
So what if we said in the, in that second paragraph, if we add a comma after that and said, that in addition to the town manager, any two of the five individuals listed?
In addition to the town manager, right.
Any two of the four, since he was.
Right, right, that's good.
And you would do something in the, the very next paragraph somewhere, correct?
Correct. Yeah, I think the exact same change, right?
Yes.
I move to adopt the amended resolution.
As amended?
He said amended, yeah.
He said amended. Is there a second?
A second.
Any other comments?
Okay, item number five, seminars.
Right, are there any, are there any comments from any citizens? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the amended proposal indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, next.
Item number five, seminars and conferences. There is a seminar for the Allegheny League of Municipalities Spring Conference on April 2nd through 5th this year, of course. Are there any other conferences or seminars?
I'd just like to announce the services dinner. Where's the, what's the deadline for RSVPing on the services appreciation dinner?
Was actually.
The hard deadline is this Friday.
All right, so that is February 20th, 6 o'clock.
Yes.
So the hard deadline is Friday. So anyone who's involved with the boards, committees, or authorities are welcome. And administrative staff too, please RSVP, so you can have your, your seat at our appreciation dinner.
Okay. Okay. All right, item number six, public comment on the reports, anything else?
Steve Mertz, 180 Ridge Avenue. I have a quick question on the LERTA. Is there a timeframe on that? For example, if, let's say everybody south of Blaser came in and, and, and redeveloped the area in the next five years, would then the property north of Blaser be able to come in in maybe 10 years and take full advantage of this on what's no longer a blighted area at all?
The, that's all set forth by the, by the ordinance. So if it's within the geographic area that's determined to be blighted, then the town can set a schedule for not to exceed 10 years, sort of however they want to set that up.
Okay, just make sure that they don't, yeah.
Good evening, Marcia Caliendo, Abbey Road, Abbey Lane. Question about the LERTA. Does this include the funeral home and the, what's it, two office buildings that are currently there as well? No, so just the undeveloped property that includes the rave cinemas, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so nothing is there. I, I just, I'm trying to wrap my head around this, and it's very difficult to try to say this is something we might want to do without any type of plan. And without somebody saying this is what we want to do to the rave cinemas, which I do perceive that as being blighted. I'm not sure about the rest of the property being blighted, but we certainly know what the issues are around the rave cinemas. And to include everyone in that, where we have something that's already under development, and basically, the, the people who are going to be resigning there are not going to be taxpayers because they're retired, so there's no earned income in any of the retirement, the community, for the most part. That's a generalization. Who will be utilizing services, such as the ambulance authority, at a higher ratio than other, other residents. So I, I just don't understand why, something that's already planned and ready to break ground or near ready to break ground, why we would want to include that in, in, in with the LERTA. But I do understand the need to do something with rave. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Zoning committee. Bruce, do you want, before we make a motion about Corporate Drive, do you want to speak on this, so we know what we're?
So, this is a little bit of a new procedure.
So this is a little bit of a new procedure, since we're having both our committee meeting and voting meeting on the same night. So we're going to have a presentation. Tonight we have with us Lydia Cesna, who represents ZL2, the manager and owner of Corporate Drive, McCandless Corporate Center. Kevin McKeegan is here serving dual purposes. He's here for the AltaVia development. John Friedrich, Anthony Semelis are the engineers on the job. And last but not least, Kevin Rutledge is the architect on the job. So we had a long, two long meetings with the planning commission discussing this, and I think we ended up with a very good plan. It was probably a very good plan to begin with, but we didn't know it. So Kevin and John and Anthony and Tom Price from Kevin's office spent a lot of time redoing the plans and showing them to us. So I think the planning commission ended up being impressed with this, and I hope everybody is. It was a great plan. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Kevin.
And Kevin's already talked it out of the way. You imagine it's here. It didn't work, and it did.
Well, first, I want to thank members of council for hearing our proposal for 5300 Corporate Drive. As you're probably aware, this is the site of the former TGI Fridays, which has since been torn down. I'm sure a lot of us have memories of that site. And we hope that what's going in there is going to be even better than what was there before. Again, the property is 5300 Corporate Drive. It's bounded on the west side by McKnight Road, on the east side by Corporate Drive, and the main entry to the site is from Corporate Drive. Just a quick agenda, we're going to run through some technical requirements on the site design. John Frederick from CEC will lead that discussion. I'll come back up and talk about the goals with the building design and also the landscape design. And then if you all have questions, we can field them during the question and answer. And the appendix is there if we need to look at any technical questions or get further into the weeds. So with that, I'll give it over to John for the site design.
Good evening. John Frederick with Civil and Environmental Consultants, civil engineer for the project. Again, as indicated, this is a view from northbound McKnight Road, looking at what was the TGI Fridays on 5300 Corporate Drive. It's a 2.3-acre parcel, again, bound by McKnight Road and Corporate Drive. This is a view from the main entrance off of Corporate Drive, again, looking northbound to what was the former TGI Fridays restaurant. And due north is 5500 Corporate Drive, the multi-story office building in the background there. The site plan, this is the existing conditions. This shows what was the TGI Fridays, originally constructed in the 1980s at about 9,400 square feet of restaurant use with the outdoor patio, reconstructed about 2000, 2001 to what is shown here today. Maintaining the, backwards, maintaining the entrance off of Corporate Drive at this location here to the south is a restaurant located in this location. And there is an interconnect to 5500 Corporate Drive at this location, which falls into or drops into the 5500 parking lot over here, as well as an interconnecting staircase connecting 5500 Corporate to 5300 Corporate. The building was taken down last fall. All utilities were kept and prepped for new development on site. The existing stormwater system shown here along the east side of the property will be maintained. We will be adding to that to maintain provisions and meet the provisions for water quality for the site as we redevelop. This is the site plan, showing the restaurant as planned. Two tenants, Kevin will describe in more detail the actual architectural features of the building, but in general, the south side is tenant one, which is 6,500 square foot footprint, and future tenant two, which is a 5,000 square foot footprint with an adjoining 1,500 square foot outdoor patio. The parking has been distributed, again, similar to what the TGI Fridays provided previously. On the north and south ends, we have our ADA accessible parking stalls. There is a total of 153 parking spaces throughout the site, and there is a parking agreement with the property owner, which is the same ZL2 to our north, in regard to overflow. So there's an agreement in place for additional parking, again, showing the interconnect for accessibility for driving as well as patron use of the stairs here. There is sidewalks along Corporate Drive at this location here. On the west side of Corporate Drive, we are providing a concrete sidewalk extension along the south entry into the parking field at this location here. That was one comment from the planning commission. As well as we realigned through dialogue and feedback from the planning commission, we widened the front drive here to better align the egress and ingress movements of the entrance drive. So we have a 30-foot drive here as well as it better suited for vehicular and some of the emergency response vehicles for the town of McCandless. Again, the provisions for the outdoor areas, Kevin will describe some of the features of the seating areas. But in general, again, also, we, on the grading plan here for stormwater management, working with the requirements for additional water quality, we have a system planned on the north end of the lot here, a three-tank system that, again, feeds and empties into the existing system here, which then feeds the main system along Corporate Drive. Again, we're bound by McKnight Road, so there are buffer requirements which will be discussed and shown in detail along McKnight, the frontage here, which is the, actually the back of the buildings, the frontage, the main entry. It's for tenant one, is this location here, for tenant two, this location here. All utilities, basically onsite, will be redesigned and reconfigured for the two tenants. So we've worked with Westview Water as well as the SOAR Authority for new connections, Duquesne Light and Gas. So all the service providers all have been coordinated in regard to new services for the two tenants. Last is, I guess, the discussion in regard to, Kevin will describe more of the aesthetics of the site, particularly the landscape in addition to the building. Any questions regarding the site or the land development aspect of the application?
I have one. The other evening, we had a forum here regarding flash flooding issues. And I guess I'd direct this maybe better to Bruce, but this stormwater system you've got, you know, one of the discussions in that forum was the concern for those development release rates that are causing flash floods and the questioning whether or not those hundred-year models are adequate for the type of storms that we're now encountering on an annual basis multiple times. And so my question to you is, has that consideration been put into this to give us some relief from the stormwater? I see a lot of pavement here. I know that. But release rates are really an issue, and the old hundred-year storm model, as it was calculated over a 24-hour period, is not adequate, does not appear to be adequate with storms.
Quite a few answers to that question, and I appreciate the question. I've talked to at least two residents about that for this development. First off, this development was back in the 1970s and 80s it was designed, but they were ahead of their time because they already do have stormwater management in this area right now. And so if you look up through here, there's a significant amount of extra stormwater that's been added on there. We don't, John, I don't believe we control the one-year storm. I think it's the two...
Two through the 100.
Two, 10, 25, and 100. We will be talking, the town will be talking about amending its ordinance if it's legally possible to go to the one-year flash storm. But at this time, when this was started, we can't get there yet. And this is a redevelopment site. That's the other part. This is a redevelopment site. So they'll be, they're not adding any more pavement to this. Excuse me. They're not adding any more pavement. So there will be significantly less runoff than there is now. I hope that's not a sign of something happening.
Before you drop, I appreciate the efforts.
Usually goes away, usually goes away after one cough, not that bad.
So, okay, so then to be able to improve the outflows, there's some ordinance work that we need to do here.
We're going to, we're going to look at it, and it's been proposed to town council to start looking at how we might be able to modify, might be able to modify ordinances to account for the flash storms that we've been talking about. As you know, well, in addition to the flood meeting that we had here, we've been talking to a lot of residents about their problems, and it seems like a viable solution, if it's legal, and if it's legal, if we can do it.
One thing I would like to add, as far as coupled with the comments there, in regard to some of the changes over time that have occurred with stormwater management, we also look at the most current stormwater intensities or rainfall durations that occur over a 24-hour period, which is the NOAA, the National Oceanic Administration. So there's tracking that occurs. So they take the latest data that exists based on this region rainfall that occurs. So it's not published data that you've seen in ordinance in the past where you use 5.7 inches for the 100-year. They look at current data and data that's relative to current times and not something that was published decades ago.
No, I appreciate that. I wish you would have been here to see the packed house standing remotely to absolutely demonstrate that it is a problem. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
John, does this have an additional release rate in the Gertie's Run area?
It does. It has reductions.
So we have, in addition, we, Gertie's Run has another reduction on top of all that. Oh, actually, this goes, doesn't go to Gertie's Run. It goes to West Little Pine Creek. Yes, I'm sorry. It still has a further reduction in the, it's not 100% release rate.
No further questions?
You're saying that this is a two-tenant building?
It is.
Do you have a second tenant at this time?
That will be just, the second tenant is unnamed at this point.
I'm sorry, Mike.
Unnamed at this point.
I have a question for you. Looking at these plans, the way that parking spots are delineated, are these the actual numbers that we're looking at, about 40-ish parking spaces?
There's 153.
Okay, so they're, so this is just like graphic. Oh, I just wanted to be sure.
No, those are...
Because like if I was counting, so they're parking along McKnight Road then as well, not just...
Yeah, the current site plan, based on this location here, the existing parking...
This is all parking here. Okay. It was just a little lighter than the other ones. I wasn't sure if that was like a great...
The difference there is the existing parking stalls are kind of the faded back linework where the darker lines are the new stripes.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, you're welcome.
Anybody else? I'll turn it over to Kevin for the landscape and building. Thank you.
Okay. So the concept for the building, as John mentioned, it's a two-tenant, shell-only project at this point. So we're not pursuing approval for an actual restaurant. We're just looking at the shell of the building, the foundations, the steel, the envelope, and the basic building systems that will support a future tenant. So there is no occupancy tied to this, to this approval. But we started with the concept for the shell of the building for, while it would have two tenants, the idea is that it would present as one building and have one look from the street. And the idea was that the architecture of the building would be a draw, and it would, it would grab your attention from McKnight Road and make you want to know what was up there. And if you already knew what was up there, it would serve as a landmark for the restaurant that you'd be going to. To address the question about the tenants, currently tenant one is slated for Big Burrito Group. The AltaVia concept has been discussed for that. It's a higher-end Italian restaurant that currently has a spot in Fox Chapel. Currently, there are no, there's no indication for a second tenant for the other space, so that's truly a shell-only area until a new tenant is brought on board. So the finishes palette, we, early in the design, looked at two different schemes for this building. One was more of a traditional Pittsburgh steel and brick look. It's something that we all like. We see a lot of. But for this, we want to do something a little bit different, something that was a little bit perhaps not native to Pittsburgh. So we have a little bit more of a Mediterranean or a Californian type of vibe to it with more of a, excuse me, restrained materials palette that works a little bit more with warmer textures, off-whites, warm wood tones, and contrast that with the plantings and some trellis elements that we'll see as we get further into the design. So what we're showing here is a stucco texture that will feature prominently on the building facade and make it look essentially like a clean white box is what we're going for. That's broken up by wood textures in this sort of slatted appearance, a nice, a nice warm wood stain. The stucco is bounded by stone at the base and also at the top. We also have a counterpoint of painted brick, and we'll see where that comes in, just to give it a little bit more texture, a little bit more mass. And then we'll also see that there is a trellis element with a vine on the McKnight side of the building. So here's what the building would look like from the Corporate Drive entry. This is looking at the entry to the tenant one space here. As John mentioned, the tenant two entry is just down the sidewalk from there. The idea, again, is that the building has a cohesive appearance to it. So no matter who the tenant is, the building always looks the same way. The tenant, say tenant two comes in and they want to paint the other side pink, well, that's not going to work. So we're going to keep it in this, in this vocabulary and in this architectural style that we've set up. But you can see that we have the stucco for the main building here. The second building is supposed to read as separate from this area while still being the same structure. And to do that, we offset the two tenant areas and lowered the parapet height slightly of this, so that it looks like two separate buildings, but really it's one building, again, with the same architectural language. The tenant one entry has a slatted wood element above it, as does the tenant two entry. Both entries have a canopy that's clad with wood again, and the tenant one canopy continues across and becomes a trellis over another area of their space that has a lower roof. And then that is capped off with a, with this brick wall, this painted brick wall that we've introduced, one to break up the material palette a little bit and provide some texture and some interest, but also to provide a bit of an acoustic and visual buffer to the parking that is south of the site. So these are the elevations looking straight on at the building. Again, this is the, excuse me, the east elevation facing Corporate Drive. Tenant one is here. Tenant two is here. You can see that we've been deliberately restrained with the use of windows in the building. That's partly to reinforce the design that we're going for, but also it has been requested by the tenant for the space where they want to be able to create more of an immersive environment for their restaurant. And by controlling the views out to the site, they're able to make that more of an inward-focused restaurant. The other thing it allows us to do is to frame views across Corporate Drive to an area that's currently a planted hillside. We understand that there is intent for development on that parcel in the future, but for now, it's probably the best view from the site, and we wanted to take advantage of that. This is the south elevation facing the parking lot. This is the brick wall that we were discussing. That, again, is painted. It's uplighted, so especially at night, it'll have some really interesting shadows. It'll read really nicely. And it's all bounded by a limestone material, both around a door, a side door to the tenant one space, and then also an opening in the wall so that as you enter the site, as you approach the site from your car, you have a chance to possibly go through that opening, walk across some decorative pavers that we'll see in the landscape plan, and have a slightly different entry experience. The west elevation on McKnight Road, while this is the back of the building, we didn't want it to just look like a back of a building. So we have broken up the stucco elevations, again, with the wood element above a back-of-house door. This door just goes back into the kitchen for AltaVia, but we wanted to dress it up a bit and celebrate it. You can't see it, but the second tenant also has the same treatment for back-of-house door there. We have a wood fence that, excuse me, conceals two elements. On this area, it will cover an exterior walk-in cooler for the AltaVia tenant, also provides a space for future walk-in coolers for tenant two. And then further down, we have another fence that conceals a transformer and some electrical equipment that gets mounted outside. But instead of having those be... But instead of having those be rather uninteresting chain-link fences, again, we're investing a little bit more in them to have them read as the same slatted wood, excuse me, slatted wood material as the entries, and it becomes an architectural feature and reinforces the building design. What we're seeing here is an artistic element. The idea is that, and we'll see this a little bit in the next slide, but the idea is that there are two or three main components to this. One, this is a bent metal or a laser-cut metal artwork that's permanently mounted to the side of the building. The intent is that it reads as a mountainside in profile. So the Alta Via is actually a road in the dolomite mountain range, and the idea is that this is the profile of the dolomites rendered in painted steel. To make that a little bit more interesting, we have a stainless steel cable system that's mounted to the ground and then, excuse me, attached to the building. We'll have climbing plants that can go up that, that trellis system and vines that'll give it this lush appearance in the summer. And then in the winter, you can see that even with the cable system bare of plantings, it still has visual interest. You can read the mountain range profile a little bit more clearly. And in addition to serving as an artwork element on the building, it also reinforces the brand of the tenant in that space. Looking at these elevations, you can see the slatted wood fence here and the slatted wood fence over here. This is for the electrical yard. This is for the walk-in coolers, excuse me. This is the lower area for the Tenant One space. This entire zone is fully enclosed for Tenant One. Tenant Two has an outdoor patio space that currently is just a concrete slab for future development by the tenant in cooperation with us and in cooperation with the landlord. So that's actually what we're looking at here on the north elevation. One of the comments from council was that this elevation is very bland in comparison to the rest of the building. We agree, but the idea is that this is kept flexible again so when the second tenant comes on board, they can influence the design of their patio, and that patio will be designed, again, to reinforce the architecture of the rest of the facility. Any questions about the building design before we move to landscape?
May I just ask one?
Sure.
I know restaurants are fairly large energy users. Did you take any special care with the curtain wall of this project or any efforts towards Energy Star or LEED certifications for this project?
We have not been pursuing any sort of LEED or sustainable certification on the project, but the building is designed to meet the current Energy Code, the 2015 International Energy Conservation Code, which includes, excuse me, includes higher requirements for envelope, roof, and window insulation. So the building is inherently efficient because the cladding is essentially a layer of continuous insulation with no bridging, and then the finish is applied over top of that. So the thermal envelope is very efficient. We have actually a very low percentage of openings in that thermal envelope, and the ones that are in there are highly performing glass, thermally broken frames, energy-efficient doors, energy-efficient frames. So it's a combination of higher-performing materials and good building design to keep the energy usage reduced from what you might expect otherwise.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
There's a lot, the fencing that you have there is all wood?
Yes.
A lot of wood. Who takes care of it down the road as the wood deteriorates?
Sure. So two parts to that. One is making sure that we spec the right wood initially during construction, that it gets finished the right way so that it is less of a maintenance concern over time. So currently, we're looking at possibly cedar as a material and staining that and sealing that so that maintenance is reduced over time. But ultimately, the maintenance and the upkeep of that will fall to the landlord and the landlord's crews to make sure that that stays in, in good working order. Other questions? Okay. Moving quickly to landscape design, because the building has such a simple and refined palette of materials, we wanted to be a little more expressive and a little more colorful with the plantings. And you can see some of that here. The goal is to have a variety of plantings and interesting layouts and various, excuse me, patterns and colors, and also to have four-season interest so that in the middle of winter, it's not just a barren, boring spot. So we have, excuse me, ornamental grasses, flowering perennials, fragrant and colorful plants. And we try to work in some other landscape materials, such as natural stone pavers and textured concrete, to reinforce what we're doing with the landscape. Touching quickly on the buffer yard requirements of the zoning code, those actually work in our favor to provide very nicely planted edges to the property and transition us to the street in an elegant way. So we have fairly dense planting along McKnight Road. That's a combination of canopy trees, understory trees, and shrubs, along with a four-foot-high black picket fence, similar to what you see at McCandless Crossing currently. Along Corporate Drive, we have similarly dense buffer yard requirements adjacent to the driveway. But as the site moves down Corporate Drive, the parking lot distance to the property line increases, and the plantings taper off some, which also works with the contours of the site because by the time you get here, it's a fairly steep hillside. And then we have some additional plantings required between our parcel and 5500 to the north. Adjacent to the building, this plan's a little hard to see, but this is a plan showing the gardens that we're plan, we're planning for around the building. The idea is that as you approach the site, especially the area in front of Tenant One, has a lush garden appearance. This incorporates the stone pavers and the textured concrete that we mentioned earlier. And so if you're approaching, you can go on the sidewalk, or if your kids want to take a path through the garden, they have the, the ability to do that. It also provides a nicer waiting area outside on a nice day if the restaurant's full and they're, they're rather busy. Tenant Two, just by virtue of being pulled to the east a little bit closer to Corporate Drive, has a more modest planting bed, but their planting opens up as they get over to the patio space. This is the concrete slab that I was talking about currently. That would be the footprint for a future patio, again, to be designed in conjunction with the landlord and the core and shell architect, Estrada. Here at the corner of the two buildings, we have an ornamental tree, and then we have another ornamental tree back in this corner, again, just to soften those inside edges. And we also bring the planting around to the back corner of the building and provide a bit of a foundation for the plantings that are going up the trellis on the west elevation facing McKnight Road. We already saw this rendering. I pointed out the trellis. You can see the buffer yard in the front here with the fence, and this is one of the ornamental trees that softens that corner of the building. And then this would be a view from the Corporate Drive entry, showing a combination of the buffer yards and then also the gardens that we've planned in front of the building. And with that, any questions?
What are these shrubs?
Excuse me, I'm not sure if those are meant to be accurately rendered, but it's one of the, I don't have the planting list in front of me, but I believe the intent.
I didn't bring mine either.
Yeah. I believe the intent is that that is this shrub planting group here. I can't remember what the species is. I'll throw my head.
I can't remember, but if they're barberry?
Mm-hmm.
They are not.
Good.
I've been there before we got that far.
I couldn't remember, and I just saw how red they were.
Yeah, as soon as you asked the question, I had the same idea.
Fair point. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, I do want to point out that we, the town, has been looking for a traffic signal to be placed at the intersection of, the northern intersection of Corporate Drive and Babcock Boulevard. We've been looking for that since the inception of the Corporate Drive Plan, McCandless Corporate Center. And we thought that this was going to be the trigger to get that finally put in. Lo and behold, it fell 24 trips short. So the developer, McCandless Corporate Center, Lydia Cesna in particular, has agreed to put the traffic signal in when warranted. Actually, they agreed to put it in when town council wanted it, but I found out that we can't just say, "Put it in," and have to actually meet warrants. So we're going to have to do a developers' agreement. That's going to be, we suggested that be part of the motion, along with the shared parking agreement with 5500 Corporate Drive. So when we get into that, that's part of the motion. Suggesting that when we have the complete build-out of the second restaurant and kinder care, that a, a new traffic study be done to see if it is warranted in, in reality, as opposed to just projections.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Then I move to take action on the preliminary and final land development application for a plan known as 5300 Corporate Drive for Zell Two Inc., located at 5300 Corporate Drive, as per parcel number 715-L248, formerly the TGI Friday's property, as per project number 19015, pages 1 through 24, prepared by CEC Inc., dated November 27, 2019, the latest revision being January 22, 2020, conditioned upon the signing of a developers' agreement guaranteeing the installation of a traffic signal at the northern intersection of Babcock Boulevard and Corporate Drive when warranted by an approved traffic study and agreement with neighboring property at 5500 Corporate Drive to provide a minimum of 20 parking spaces to serve the proposed development.
I second the motion.
Any comments from anyone in council?
Just for clarification, the motion would be to approve the request? Because we purposely just left it at "take action."
Oh, okay.
It would be approved in the eye or table.
Okay. Okay, thank you. It was approved by the Planning Commission, and our town engineers have approved it also. So no comments from anyone in council. Any comments from any citizens? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the approval, Bruce, you're saying something?
I'm going to turn it off.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We just had public comment on this only one article, so I think we can probably move, move on from that. Report from the Public Safety Committee?
Chief's report.
Good evening. A few brief items of note from the police department's perspective that occurred in January here in the town. Unfortunately, our traffic, our accident investigators investigated one fatal crash in January occurring, occurring on McKnight Road and Arcadia Drive, and involved two vehicles, one being a Port Authority bus. There was one fatality. I believe that investigation has wrapped up. On a more positive note, we continue to fit in training whenever it fits within the budget and makes sense for our officers. Our officers started their mandatory in-service training this month. That will continue on through probably the spring and summer, as well as, like I said, additional training whenever we can fit it in and, and it fits within the budget. And sticking with the training theme, we trained two officers this year, or I'm sorry, this past month to be fill-ins for the school resource officers. Beginning the 20th of February here, it becomes mandatory for anyone filling in for, as a school resource officer. They have to have a 40-hour training course, and we trained two substitutes that would fill in whenever our two acting school resource officers may be off for whatever reason. And I think that's about all I have. You all have my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council?
I have a comment, if I may, please. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for acting chief Hawk, for stepping in and helping us out with this situation. We really appreciate your help.
I'm honored to do so.
I would also like to mention to council that probably in the near future, we will probably have to discuss what we'll be doing, looking for a permanent chief. And my feeling is that we need to set up some goals and objectives for a new chief that are, that will be coming in. I think that that's extremely important because of the situation that we, we've gone through. I also think that the officers should have performance evaluations. We discussed that early on, and then we didn't, we didn't really do anything with that. So I think that has, should be included. And I feel that all officers should have sensitivity training. Those are just my comments.
If I could address a couple of those, I believe Mr. Grimm is working on a, maybe a town employee-wide sensitivity training that's to be coming in the near future. And as far as the performance evaluations, we have a couple of things on the table down there. A couple of different programs that we, one that I have one of my sergeants working on as we speak, and another one that we, we have researched on and off for probably a year or two. So we have a couple of options that are available to us regarding the performance evaluations, ma'am.
Okay, then maybe Carolyn and I can meet with you and you could.
Certainly.
Enlighten us with, with some of these ideas. I'd appreciate it, but thank you so much for your help.
Yes, ma'am. Any additional?
Any comments or questions from the public? Nope, you're good.
And sir, I think you had a question a couple of weeks ago about pricing on the vehicles. I sorted that out too. The write-up that my lieutenant submitted, when we got the invoice, it was $500 less per vehicle for the two Explorers, so we ended up saving $1,000. That was a good catch. And Mr. Kirk, I love that tie. Thank you.
He's been looking at you all evening.
Public Works, Public Works Committee. So for the Public Works Committee, we're going to have an item zero, which is to acknowledge Mr. Sabina's 50 years of service to the town. Thank you very much.
I will just say that it has been my pleasure.
So item number one, the Public Works Activity Report.
I believe you all have copies of the activity report for January. If you have any questions now, I'd be glad to have, answer them for you if I can, and as always, contact me anytime you want to, and I will come up with an answer.
Mr. Sabina?
Sir?
Another question. Where will we be storing all the extra salt?
How big is your garage? Well, interestingly enough, we had a brief discussion about that at a meeting I was at this morning. And over the last couple of years, the suppliers, both Morton Salt and American Salt, because of the lack of need, were willing to store salt without a, a per-ton storage fee. They've not announced that yet this year, but it seems that everybody's in the same boat. We've, we've all got a minimum amount that we need to buy, and most folks in, that I was with this morning in the North Hills Cog Group have not come close to that yet. So we will be discussing with the, with the two suppliers the possibility of eliminating the storage fees for this coming summer.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay. Item two, review of proposed ordinance to authorize the acceptance of Providence Boulevard as a town road and public right-of-way. The public stormwater system therein and replace the performance bond guaranteeing the public improvements with a maintenance bond. So this ordinance, we'll have it in our packets, and we discussed it last month. But if there's any questions for Mr. Sabina, please feel free to ask.
And I think this is an ordinance that we have been working with Gavin's office, Bruce, Mark, with the developers. And I think we, we have everything in place at this point, all necessary agreements, maintenance bonds. So we are, we're good to go. We can advertise that ordinance and proceed on directive from the council. We can advertise that ordinance and proceed on directive from the council.
Item three, I move to award a contract to A. Liberoni Incorporated, the lowest responsible bidder for construction and repaving of various town roads under the 2020 paving program, at a total bid price of $2,296,000.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any questions? We had six bidders this time. Two of the six came in under budget, so that was nice.
I would comment that we had sent out 16 packets for bidding. Of those 16, we had obviously six replies. And I also found out this morning that we are one of the earliest to open bids this year, so we've probably gotten the best prices that we could possibly get.
Right. Good, thank you.
And I would also like to acknowledge that Mark made some adjustments with the specifications this year, which I believe aided in the bids being under budget, put some controls in place that didn't exist in the last couple of years.
Mark, just out of curiosity, is that normal, six out of 16 that responded?
Depends on how much state work is out there. If there's not a lot of state work carried over from a previous year, we generally see more bidding on our program. Apparently, there's a significant amount of carryover work, I assume, from PENDOT work from last year, because with 16 packets out, I really thought we'd probably get eight to 10 that actually bid. We got six, so...
But if we got good prices, that's good.
Yeah, we got excellent prices.
Good. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Any other comments from citizens? Hearing none? I hope you gotta move fast.
Something is better than obviously doing that. Paul Heckman, 10529 Abbey Lane. I have a question about why, what the advantages to the town of having Providence Road as a township highway? I live in a private, in a private community, and I've been asked several times by my constituents, I'm a member of the board there, who say, "Well, we have private road, but we pay the same taxes as everybody else does on the value of our property and all that stuff. Why can't this be a public road?" And I said, "Well, because it's not how they set it up." So, I know somebody's gonna see this and ask me the question about why shouldn't ours be that? Is there an advantage to the town inherently in having that as a public road as opposed to what it is now?
I think we lost our individual in this room who has the most institutional knowledge and is best able to. I believe it was always planned to be a public road. Mark, do you know the answer to that question?
It was, as my understanding, because of the access for the church, it was deemed that that needed to be a public road because of the traffic in and out of the church, as well as the traffic in and out of the McCandless Crossing development.
That does sound familiar, and there is a portion, a key portion of what's being taken over is the stormwater facilities, and there's actually a large portion that's staying private underneath. There's a very large pipe underneath Providence Boulevard that's staying, that's being maintained by the developer out there. So, that's a little bit different than your normal situation, only when the town takes it over, it's all the stormwater facilities as well. So, it's kind of a unique situation because of the, you know, serving multiple properties out there, multiple commercial-type properties, commercial institutional, and also because it is sort of a kind of public-private partnership on the stormwater.
Okay, and this is going to go from Babcock all the way to the restaurants above? Does that go through, or just back to the theater?
It only extends about 875 feet or so.
Roughly. It cuts off before you enter...
So, it's really sort of access to that property?
Correct.
To McCandless Crossing, rather than...
Yeah, it cuts off before you get to the McCandless.
All right. I know someone's gonna see this, and they're gonna ask me this, so I feel better being able to answer it. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. There's a motion on the floor with a second. Any public comment about the paving program price? Hearing none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Item number four, I move to authorize the purchase of the 10-ton dump truck body and central hydraulic system from Stevenson Equipment Incorporated at a purchase price of $84,280, as per CoStar's contract number 025-021. Second. Motion and a second. Are there any comments from council? This is within budget?
Yes.
Nope, that was a statement.
Oh, sorry.
This is within budget.
Just confirming.
Does anyone, it's always, that's, oh, so nice fun thing to say. Anybody else have any comments from council about this, about our truck? Comments from citizens? Hearing none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, I move to authorize the purchase of a plow and spreader for the 10-ton dump truck from Stevenson Equipment Incorporated at a purchase price of $16,811, as per CoStar's contract number 025-021. Is there a second? Second. There's been a motion and a second. Any comment from any council? It is?
Within budget.
Any other comments? Any comments from any citizens? Hearing none? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any public comment on the Public Works Committee? That concludes our report. Services Committee?
Services Committee, as many of you may know, Fire Marshal Dan Stack is mourning the loss, recent loss of his father, together with all of us, and he remains in our prayers. He's not here tonight. In his absence, I'd like to ask Manager Grimm to provide the Fire Marshal report for the month of December 2019, and permit reports for January 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Fire Marshal's report will be forthcoming due to the passing of Marshal Stack's father. He had not completed that, and we'll get that to you, and we'll get that out and post it publicly for everyone's review. Permit report for the month of January is included in your council packet and was also included in the public packets for your review. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact either myself or Mr. Betty.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. I would just comment on the enforcement violations stats, that the town does continue to vigorously enforce its property maintenance codes, and appreciate that effort. That concludes my report. Mr. Or any questions?
Yes, I have a comment. I noticed in our packet that there are a number of complaints about people leaving their trash cans out longer than they should. Is there a chance we could put that on our website, just reminding citizens about taking the...
There's a number of things related to the trash collection that we'll include that as a reminder.
Okay.
Some reminders every now and then.
Right, that's what I thought.
That general reminder is needed to make sure people...
Are there any other comments or questions from council? Hearing none? Any public comments? That concludes my report. Madam President.
Report from the Recreation Committee?
There has been a new activity with Recreation Committee, so I'd like to open up for public comment, please. Thank you.
Any unfinished business? Under new business, I need to get a little feedback from council, and that is, do we direct? Under Public Works, we did not commit to directing administration to proceed with this process, with this ordinance.
The acceptance.
The acceptance of this ordinance. Is it okay for us to? Go ahead, we have to advertise and have a public meeting, and so we need to agree. We don't have to vote on this, we can just do a head nod. Is it okay for, okay, good. All right, perfect. All right, good. The other thing I need a head nod on is, or maybe it will require some more comment, I'm not sure, how does council want to proceed as far as, with regard to the LURDA request?
Madam President, as I indicated, much more detail, I think, is required on my behalf before I can make a decision to even convene a public hearing on this matter. I don't think, we even have enough information to do that at this point.
I agree. So, do you, are you, then are we asking them to put something together and then present that? Some terms? Is that what we're talking about?
That's a question, I guess, for Mr. Rob is, you know, based on how the law is designed, you know, by us asking for, "We want your plans first before we determine blight," are we putting the chicken before the egg and going, will that harm us down the road by asking them for plans before we make the distinction of blight?
I don't, I think the answer is yes, and it's because you, a conceptual plan right now, you know, may trigger some ideas that you might have, but it's not gonna commit a developer to doing whatever it is that they put in front of you. So, I think what council, if council's gonna consider designating a deteriorated area within the town, it should sort of be done independently as to what one person's idea, one proprietor's idea might be. It's more of a holistic, like, all right, you know, we've determined that unless we create some sort of tax incentive over here, that it's not likely to be developed, or not likely to be developed to the extent that the town would like it to. So, I think that's the way to look at this, rather than, you know, a proposal that may or may not come to fruition because that's all it is. Now, you know, you can certainly hear someone out if they have ideas in that area. I just don't think that should be the basis for your decision one way or another as to whether to pursue the LURDA.
Well, Councilor, Madam President, as I said, then, I did not see any compelling community good based on what I heard tonight. I'm not prepared to, I'm not interested in pursuing it with the developer any further to grant them tax relief.
I think there's two parts to consider in this, following up on Mr. Rob's comment. I think the council can take into consideration whether or not they want to designate that area as a LURDA that would, or a blighted area, with the idea that at some point in time could consider incentives. Is this an area we want, we would want to consider incentivizing for the right kind of development? If we get the right kind of development, then the council can consider a tax, some type of incremental tax abatement. If you don't see that, there's no reason to consider it. It's simply a designation at this point. If you wanted to outline an area and name that as a blighted area, it's a designation. It doesn't hurt, I don't believe, the values of the property may potentially give some, somebody pause to look at it, but I think, look at it in two pieces. Do you want to consider that as an area that you may, at some point in time, want to incentivize development in? If that's the case, then you look at the idea of designating that as a LURDA or a blighted area. Then, when you're looking at the development itself, any kind of proposed development, that's when you start to get a sense of whether or not any kind of an abatement or incentive financially makes sense, not until then.
And I guess I would add, too, that you want to really specify which area you're talking about. You're referring to areas, there's one area that was presented, but that wouldn't necessarily be, you know, council could have other areas in mind that would be, that would look differently than what was outlined in Rev.
Right, because their original plan was just the upper end, and now they're including the whole thing.
Yes.
Right?
I mean, communities do this in a number of different ways. I mean, you outline a specific area, other communities can designate it by zoning district, you know, where there's a larger area that they want to incentivize development. There's a number of ways that you can look at this concept, but right now, we're only looking at this one specific area.
Madam President, may I ask a question? Currently, there's an owner for the Rave Cinema site, correct?
Correct.
And we have property maintenance codes that we can enforce with that owner, correct?
Yes.
So, I would just ask us all to consider that before we designate that area as blighted, to me, it's a curious position to say, you know, for the owner to be saying, "Please designate this as blighted," so that I can sell the property, so that the next person can have a tax incentive to be here. So, I think if there's something we want to address, why not address it now with the current property owner?
I agree.
Why have we not done that before? Is there a reason?
Well, I think one of the, the challenge is in addition to sort of the property falling into disrepair is also the floodplain there, and that's one of the potential factors that is taken into account as far as the developability, you know, of the area. But, yeah, I mean, there's no reason that the proprietor can't be held accountable for building code and/or property maintenance violations on the property.
But blighted does, includes more than just violations. It includes vacant, it includes underutilized, so it's more than just ugly or trash around. So, I mean, I was trying to write down quickly the different terms or the different definitions that's associated with blighted, so, but any violations they have, they certainly should be held accountable to complying with those. The other thing, too, to think about is if we decided that we did not want, that it was no public good, I feel that was a great word, there's no public good that would come out of this tax abatement, because that's what it is. Declaring it blighted, if we so chose to do that, would allow other entities, if they wanted to give them tax abatement, if they had some kind of, something worked out with them, it would allow those other entities to do that. That's all, we are the only people who can do that. So, we could technically, just so you understand, just kind of going on what Bob was saying, is that we could say, "Okay, we declare it blighted if we decided to do that, but we're not giving any tax abatement." So, good luck with getting it from, and that's what they did with McCandless Crossing. They said, "It's blighted, and then we're not giving you any money," and then they went to the county, and they got some tax reductions.
So, we can do it in two sections?
That's what Bob was trying to say, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's a possibility. We may not want to do anything. We may not want to take the time and effort to do it, because we have to designate, we have to change the designation of this area to an Economic Development District, which is gonna take, I don't even know what, to do that. So, it is time, it is energy. I think they would pay that, we wouldn't pay that, but I just want to make sure everybody totally understands what we're doing or not doing.
So, if we said blighted, and we only went that far and didn't go the second section or second part, would the developers be as satisfied, or would they not be satisfied because we just said blighted?
Well, I think that would depend on what the governing bodies of the county and the school, you know, school board, you know, how they would come down on it as to whether or not there's even interest from either of those to give them the same sort of tax relief, which, and those are the entities that can really give the significant tax relief.
Right.
Relative to those two entities, because the mileage of the town is so very small.
I was just gonna say, Bruce had a good comment there, saying, you know, that our tax rate is so low that, you know, it would really be the school.
There's not a benefit, no huge benefit to them.
Well, Mr. Kirk, from a point of view that I thought was, you know, interesting as well, is that this is a property, at least the one specifically that these developers are developing, that's been now twice, there's been significant investment, someone willing to step up and put a lot of money into developing the property without any sort of incentive. So...
Well, they brought us a plan without asking for this.
It's unusual, it seems unusual. Usually, this is what we offer, to get people to come to a place.
Right, right, but they, we already voted on that.
This is a conversation that should have taken place a year ago.
Because then there would have been an opportunity to derive a public good. Right now, it simply goes into the developers' pockets. I'm sorry, that's how I feel about it. I'll just say it rather than waste time.
So, I want to look at, thank you, I want to look at, I want nods of, do we want to just let this go, or do we want to try to move forward with some type of plan? What are we thinking? Let it go, move forward? What are we...
I'd be interested to see if interest changes once... I'd be interested to see if interest changes once, you know, ground is broken for the development that's already been approved, if that is encouraging to other developers, if they see something happening that they want to be next to.
So you're saying, you don't really think if we want to give it a LURDA, this is the time? To wait on that?
Let the market dictate.
You're saying wait? Okay, okay, all right. So that's a wait? Wait.
I agree with Councilman Clune, and additionally, I think we need to do something at the Rave Cinema site. It's an eyesore. Something needs to change there, and I wouldn't want us to overlook the fact that that piece of property could really be used for some help with the stormwater that we're having problems with on Blazer Drive. So something different needs to happen there, but as far as making the entire area a LURDA district right now, no, I don't think that that's necessary.
Well, and that also, just to add on to that part, so that northern piece of property, I know Bruce has told us in the past, you cannot build on it because there's so much red clay in there, so no matter what we do to that piece, it's not, I actually have, I've met the owners in the past, and they said they want that to be green space, that that's what they bought it to, and they've intended for, and that's what it is. So all because it's green space does not mean it's blighted, so that portion would not be even related to this.
All right, so I'll just ask, that's four, but I'll just ask, are you guys with waiting?
I agree.
Yes, great.
All right, okay, then we'll take no further action on this? And we're done with that, okay? Is there any other new business?
I just want to take a moment and compliment the environmental action committee and Councilperson Woods for the program that was put on here last week. As Mr. Kirk says, standing room only, fantastic program, definitely a need and interest from our residents and our neighboring communities for further discussion on this topic, and I hope that McCandless leads the way in that sort of discussion.
The speaker series from the EAC has been a huge success, and it's really catching on, people are really paying attention, and please look forward to the additional speakers that are coming in the future. Anyone else? Okay. A public comment, unrelated agenda items.
Steve Mertz, 180 Rich, I just wanted to remind you again, over a year ago, we started discussing, for about a half an hour, plastic and glass recycled roads. We've been told they last considerably longer. We were supposed to do it last year, never did. Start looking into it before we get overwhelmed in the budget process next year, and I'm also wondering about how much longer before we start talking about the chickens and ducks and bees again? The spring's coming was...
It is in the dogs and ducks. I'm calling it the Dogs and Ducks Subcommittee right still, and soon as they get through shaking it out, it's going to go to planning, and then it's coming to council.
Okay, it's been four years that we started talking about this, and it seems like this is one of the simplest things we could be doing.
It is so contentious.
Yeah. Getting old, a lot of people waiting for it.
Any other public comment? Okay, thank you.
Barbara Richards, Manor Court. This is going back to the Blazer Drive thing, but just, I'd like to just say that I hope that there is a lot of research done and that everybody remembers what really happened down there when the rave property was offered up to the town for purchase, and I believe that Kim and Ms. Powers were the only ones that were on the council at the time, but it was found to be contaminated, I believe, when environmental studies, soil things were done, and it was that reason that it was not turned into a green space or a park, I think, is what they wanted to turn it into. So please, as you move forward with that, don't forget all parts of that property, that it was once, it is contaminated, not just a floodplain.
Whoever buys that property, if they peel off that layer, they're responsible for mediating it. So whoever developed it, whoever, they will be responsible for mediating it, absolutely.
Okay, well, it was believed to be also, it was during the Walmart thing, and it was believed that that property was then going to contain a retention pond that would benefit the land where Walmart was going to be built, which I think you're, it's already a done deal or something like that, but I wonder if there's any connection now. Why did Walmart need that property to build a retention pond then, but nobody needs it now? So I'm just wondering, that's something that really needs to be relooked at.
I really think it's a difference in the type of development. You know, Walmart has a huge parking lot, huge footprint for the building...
That makes sense, yeah.
Where the proposed development is going in place and has more green space and...
Forty percent green space.
Yes. So it's significant difference compared to the...
But I think there's flooding problems also where the senior housing is going to go.
Not on that section. It's more down toward the Port Authority property and the rave property.
Okay. That's not the way I understood it years ago. I thought it was between that, you know, valleys and the road behind it. There is a flood area back there. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any other citizen comment? Hearing none? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any adjourn?